Welcome to our work session on April 27th. And this is a work session about a figure metrics. Is that correct? All right. Take it away.
Thank you, Board President Mark Wiss, board members. It is a pleasure to be with you here this evening. As we begin to continue our conversation on strategic plan metrics, it's my pleasure to welcome Dr. Jonathan Dings to walk us through the process. Very excited where we are today. I think when we think about the work that we've been doing around our strategic plan and the goals that we've been trying to set, what I think you'll find today is an increase in accountability and transparency on what it is that we're trying to do that will help communicate to our community, both at the school level and at the district level, how we're doing and how we need to continue to work to focus on the things that we've said are important within our strategic plan. So with that, I will pass the presentation over to Dr. Dings.
I think I need to begin actually screen sharing. Great. President Mark Wiss, board members and Dr. Anderson, I'm happy to be here tonight to talk to you about the metrics that we've developed today for the strategic plan. As an overview of what we'll be doing, we'll be reminding ourselves of the context, beginning with the long-term outcomes work. And the theory of action we have around this work, considering the timeline we've had to develop these metrics, as well as going over the metrics in as much detail as we would like and by way of showing you screenshots demonstrating what we've put together as far as a dashboard. And then, of course, considering next steps. So the long-term outcomes work talks about the kind of opportunities that students ought to have, the reduction of disparities in achievement and being able to graduate with the necessary skills for success. These were developed, of course, through work that was done in Dr. Anderson's first year and were vetted with folks in our community before we took the next step, which is to think about the theory of action that we have in looking at this work, right? Which is if we increase meaningful opportunities, provide equitable access for all students, then we will accelerate student growth. And only after growth is accelerated will we improve achievement and reduce disparities, right? So this idea about opportunities preceding growth and achievement matters. The metrics by which we think about this include some things we see on our district performance framework. But importantly, the metrics that we've added are ones that try to measure these opportunities well, based enlargement measure on the board's feedback, as well as, of course, looking at postgraduate success and disparities for groups in the kind of metrics that we're looking at. And what we see, what we aim to see over time is improved long-term outcomes on things that are not just including the district performance framework, but that's a part of it. Reminder of sort of the core part of this work was we got, we proposed some metrics. We got feedback from our district accountability committee. We convene a group of stakeholders containing parents, a student, teacher, administrators, and got some feedback on the particular opportunity metrics we were looking at from the University of Colorado. This was during COVID times, so our outreach to see how these, what the community's feedback with was really gathered by folks who were on that stakeholder group, not in, not a super large group of, not extensive survey effort of our whole community. We did bring those back for your feedback. And based on, based on that, we've developed some good views of what the metrics are. So in more detail, if we wish to look at more and more detail, right? The timeline for this is work that began really last a couple years ago and June with the presentation of metrics. Bringing a revised version of that back to the board in September, getting feedback to emphasize opportunity, proposing and providing an expanded list to the district accountability committee. More board feedback in November. We melded this work in with the local accountability system, grant funding, and provided an update on both of those processes to the board. Received recommendations from the district accountability committee on our, for the list, convened a group of stakeholders, then got the CUS Center for Assessment, Design Research and Evaluation to give us feedback on that, too. And then made recommendations in the presentation June of last year. What's happened since then, right? In addition to all the work and the changing priorities that goes on, given the pandemic circumstances that we have, is development of the data and dashboards showing the kind of views that we have. And just in this past couple of weeks, convened a group of stakeholders, again, to review with them the progress that had been made. So the metrics that we have, and then we'll get to the views of all these data. Under the achievement gaps frame of looking at this, this points to the work we need to do with regard to achievement, focusing in this case in reading and math. Growth in both of those areas also, as well as improvements in graduation rates and dropout rates. With regard to opportunity gaps, those can be thought of in many ways, but the ways we're focusing are that the climate of the school needs to be supportive, that students who are behind in their achievement need access to increased time to learn, needs opportunities in math and generally to accelerate. And as well as that, for students who are not reading well at an early age, access to intervention to help them get on track in their elementary years particularly. And then a further way of thinking about this is in terms of reducing disproportionality that we see in discipline, that we see in students being identified for or indeed staffed into special education is well as in our, in how well our teachers and leaders mirror the racial and ethnic makeup of the communities that they serve. And then in terms of enrollment and gifted and talented and AP enrollment kinds of courses, as well as earning a seal of biliteracy. Boy, that's a long list, but there are pictures of all but one of these for us to be thinking about. I don't know if you prefer that we go through all those or if we pause for questions now or pause as we come to ones that we should be looking at harder or thinking of more.
I would leave that up to the board. If the board does not have any immediate questions, I would suggest we start to go through the dashboards. And then Jonathan, let's just make sure that we pause if there's questions as we go through. Does that work for everyone? Kitty?
I have one question. How many languages, in how many languages do we offer the seal of biliteracy?
However many we would be able to have someone demonstrate. But I, but I don't know the number of, we've improved over times what we, what we're, what we used to test with, but I don't honestly know how many languages that that is.
Dr. Crespo will come up. I believe she has a better, more clear kind of read on what this looks like.
Good evening. I can share that we offered last year, some of you may remember, we offered Mandarin because we had a group that came in and they requested the seal of biliteracy opportunity, as well as their exam, Spanish, French. And I believe we had an ASL. I would have to go back and check to confirm that. And we tripled our numbers and we anticipate that those numbers will continue to go up as we continue to do work with our students in our programs.
Thank you.
I'll just add it was about 300. I'm going to go back and make sure I have the right number.
Just a quick question on, on all of the bullets up there, A through E. Do we ever discuss and do we have in there class sizes?
No.
Because I think that's an important factor in narrowing that achievement gap. Is that, is that kind of?
I think that would be a separate measure. If that's something that the board was interested in looking at, that we could look into. At this point, the metrics were really aligned to these type of outcomes, right? Like, these are all kind of outcomes-based measures. And that would be like a tactic, right? So, you know, if we want to have more conversation on getting information on that, we can do that, but that, we don't have that built into what we're going to present in regards to strategic plan metrics.
So then on the staffing into special education, can you just define that a little more clearly as far as, are we raising the percentile that a student needs to be in in order to qualify for services? Or how is, what exactly on the reduced disproportionality do we mean on staffing into special education? I know that there have been times where we've overstaffed some students and it was based on their acquisition of language. Is that what we're talking about with that?
Somewhat. So as we get to the dashboard, what you'll see is there's a disproportionate number of our Latino students who are being staffed into special education in comparison to the other ethnic groups that we would look at. So that is at the core. And that's something that the federal government looks at as well. And whether it's, they call it SIGPRO, significant disproportionality. And so as a measure, that's something that's already part of one of the goals that we want to make sure that we're, that we're keeping an eye on. We've included that in there as well. But there'll be more detail kind of on that metric when Jonathan goes through that.
Thanks, Rob, for explaining that. Because in my day, we had reduced that gap. And I just didn't realize, maybe in the last three and a half years, had it increased. Thanks.
I mean, the beauty of metrics is, is they will tell us the truth in a consistent way over time, right? You know, when we have data collection opportunities to look at things, if you have metrics that you report over time in the same way, then you can begin to start to set baselines and understand where you're improving and where you need to work on. I think that some of the data collection and the data presentations, if you don't have this, can become sporadic and maybe inconsistent. And so you'll see, as we look through some of these, some of the news is going to be worse than we would have hoped and some of the news will be better than we would have expected, right? And so I think that's why, you know, you know, working with our community, working through the process that Jonathan talked about was really, really important to get community buy-in. And as we, as we present this first version of metrics, know and understand that metrics can evolve over time depending upon where we are as a community, right? And so you can't evolve them every week, but I think that there's, that what we can speak to is an annual review process or every other year, if there are other additional things that we want to see. And then developing a process that engages our community to say, okay, these are the things that we want to continue to measure, look at, so.
Yeah. And then should we do this our last question? Then we'll ask questions as we go through the dashboard.
Just a quick question, Jonathan and Rob. When you're looking at some of the disproportionality, like in special ed, for example, are you just looking at disproportionality? Are you looking at other areas beside disproportionality? I guess I'm talking about the actual services that are being rendered under SPED. I'm thinking more about conversations that I've had with parents as it relates to them getting information in their mother language and stuff like that.
Yes, so that wouldn't make itself onto the dashboard that we've created. Not that that isn't information that isn't important to us. You know, what we've really tried to do again is try to create a dashboard that has lots of information, that talks about the achievement opportunity and disproportionality, and then are related to student outcomes, that we're trying to influence with the tactics and strategies within our strategic plan and within our efforts within the school district. So there will be things that we'd want to know more about or other things that are important. But when you try to create these dashboards and set metrics, you want to set it at a high enough level. So it really kind of gives you information on how things are going and it helps you to drive practice, drive resources, drive efforts and supports. So, good question, though. Thank you.
All right. So the basic logic that we have on all of these next slides is that we're checking for proportionality by asking something about the percentage of students in a population compared with the percentage of the students getting a result or an opportunity. In most of these instances, what we're looking at is the, can be, can be, can be seen in terms of looking at how different are the results that we're seeing relative to what we expect, as, expect in terms of if it were all even, right? And we've, we've got these dashboards working by, by thinking that when you're looking at patterns, focus on the color. If there's something that's in deep orange, that's something to be concerned about more. If there's something in dark blue, that that's a pattern that's more positive than we might expect for that group of students overall. So to give a sort of basic example here, right? If we look at this, this idea of upper level math, which is third, sorry, fifth, eighth and 11th grade math courses being one or more year above the expected amount, we can look for our Latino students and see that in those grades in the year we're showing, they make up 18% of the population. That's why that grayish bar is lining up at 18. The other bar, though, shows the, the, the number of them that have this opportunity. So only 7% have the, are enrolled in a, in, by fifth, eighth and 11th grade into an advanced course relative to that grade level. And because the difference between seven and 18 is five or bigger, that bar is colored orange. And we want to look at that orange, that, that bar is a problematic pattern. Hopefully that makes sense because they're all going to have this basic feature. There's, and, and so as you look at this, please think about looking at the patterns. So, so one, one way to think about advanced opportunities is advanced coursework overall, this is secondary level. And without necessarily getting into the numbers of each of these things, you can see again the pattern that we see, which is for Latino students, as well as those on free introduced lunch, the bar is orange, right? There's not as much participation in that opportunity compared to their percentage of the population. And that the bar, in this case, for white students, free introduced lunch students is blue, showing a bit bigger gap in raw terms overall. Okay. On the elementary, or sorry, the most related elementary version of that metric is to look at students identified for gifted and talented, as gifted and talented. And what we see again is the same overarching pattern of there's, there's underrepresentation for students who are eligible for free introduced lunch and for Latino students. Going back to the example of elementary, of, sorry, of upper level math at these grades and adding free introduced lunch to the, to the mix, right? We see the, the pattern for free introduced lunch. As for Latino students, is that they're underrepresented in this opportunity. So when we change to behavior incidents, number of students having one or more incident in the, in the, in the year, this is, this is an area where students in these same two groups are overrepresented rather than under. Being overrepresented here isn't a good thing. These are heavy incidents that we're, that we're talking about. So, so the pattern works in that, in the same kind of way with regard to being on an individual visualized education plan. This metric in terms of special education shows the same pattern also, over identification of students who are Latino and who are on free introduced lunch. When we get to graduation grades, we end up seeing much of that same pattern. And though perhaps here a bit more nuanced in some of the other, other, other groups that we're seeing, in part because the graduation metric is, it's, it's hard to get more than five points above the BVSD average, right? And the thing we're looking at here is the BVSD average rate as opposed to the percentage of kids who graduate. That would be the other way to look at this, but we've tried in this case, because graduation rate is a known metric, to basically stick with what people already kind of know, know about and use.
So 416 Latino students graduated. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Exactly right.
Out of how many Latino students?
Out of, well, so that the number there looks to be about an 83 or 4. So that's out of about 500.
And just, and it's even lower if you're FRL, even though that number's higher, the number of FRLs higher than the Latinos crack. So that, that's only 80% of kids on FRL will graduate.
Exactly. Looking, looking to an area where the finding is comparatively positive as far as not showing the same pattern we're seeing in every other thing that we've seen so far. We see that in terms of attaining the seal of biliteracy, and this is on past year, year data, and we, we think this may improve with the, with, 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 with efforts this year in a way that Dr. Crespo mentioned earlier. We see that in this, this, this case that free introduced lunch students are underrepresented, but that Asian and Latino students are, have more representation in this than the average of the population overall.
Again, 82 Latino students got the bill of biliteracy. Out of the 400 that graduated or the 400 plus that graduated?
Exactly. Right. Out of the 416 or whatever the number was that year. Yeah, I think that's the same thing, right? That's, that's the, the meaning. And one can, in this case, basically make the argument that we would expect that number to be perhaps even higher. So I would, so, and what we'll hope to see in the current year data is that that, that bar moves up even higher and that our number of Latino students identified for the seal of biliteracy gets higher. In terms of dropout rates, again, these are numbers that are relatively small, but, and one needs to use some caution in making interpretation of groups that are in fact small. But for the very reliably estimated graduation rates of free introduced lunch students and students who are Latino, we see that they are substantially higher than what we're seeing as the BVSD average there. One of the metrics that was, that was noted as being important to be thinking about is how supportive students find the environment. And on this particular metric, we would see that there's only one group of students with a bar that's the deeper, a deeper orange color. And that, that's African-American students, based on climate data that was gathered, not this fall, but the previous fall, since we didn't do the climate survey this time around. On, on the, in terms of measuring this, as far as the students who are identified as having a significant reading deficiency, which is the technical term, who have an intervention in place related to reading, we would see here that we have some more evenness in the, the pattern. But, but again, it's, it isn't, it isn't all equal. And we would have questions about the pattern with regard to Asian as well as African-American students and to some extent Latino or students on free introduced lunch. Getting into a bunch of these that are going to be kind of, kind of, kind of the same. This is looking at math test scores on CMAS or on SAT, PSAT. And we again see patterns here where the percent of students meeting benchmark is exceeded by Asian, white, and two or more racist, racist, racist students, as well as those who are not, not on free introduced lunch and appreciably lower for all other groups named on this slide. Same kind of story in most regards, except for one, one, one group when it comes to meeting the reading benchmark, right? With the note that the bar moved to the, I'll go back one here. The bar, sorry, the bar would move to the right showing that it was a little easier normatively to meet the benchmark in reading in terms of what, with, with, what, what folks, what students did last year. When we look at growth in terms of math, we would see a little bit more evenness according to the colors. We could probably refine this a little bit and make the differences here basically stand out a little bit more, but it conveys some of the same kind of patterns that we've seen overall with particularly strong performance for Asian students and lower in other groups other than two or more races white and those who are not receiving free introduced lunch. In reading, we see much of the same pattern that we saw in math normatively in terms of what we're seeing. Finally, on these slides, when we look at staff of color, we see a wide disparity. We are not as diverse in our teaching workforce or in our leadership as, as, as we are in terms of our students. And this puts it to a, to a view that we can use to help think about our need for improvement in this over time. So, next step.
Just a quick question. When you, when you have that staff of color, do you have that segregated by ethnicity? Like how many Latinos, how many African-Americans, et cetera?
We, we wouldn't have it on this particular view, but we would, we would absolutely want, want to have, have that. That is one of the views to be thinking about.
Yeah, because out of the 225 teachers, that represents what about maybe 11, 12% of the whole workforce, teacher workforce being Latino? Is that what it's saying?
Being a, being a.
Person of color.
Teacher of color, yep.
We don't know how many of those are Latino.
Top of my, 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 my head, no.
That's something that I would like to see.
Yep.
And I think that that's certainly an appropriate report as we report out to you all at the beginning of the school year after the hiring season to show progress and see where this is.
So, in terms of next steps, this was planned to come back to the board in May as far as first. far as first in terms of study and then action. The one area where we mentioned the wish to provide metrics, we don't have them yet, is one about gathering the data about learning time outside school day. We currently have data, but that data is completely dominated by work of summer school. And to provide you with more meaningful information, we would seek to implement some data collection next year where we would get a better handle on this information rather than relying on a handful of schools that would have this in some manner and maybe not consistency across that. We have two other pieces to complete some reporting relative to the local accountability metrics grant, working with a consortium of other districts. We've been told that funding will not be extended next year, so we will issue a final report in fall on what that's been done. And then, as we think towards fall again, also some public facing version of the metrics that we're seeing here, hoping to keep the focus as we have in by presenting it in the manner that we have on questions of race, ethnicity and poverty. With that, I stand ready for your questions.
Just a couple of closing thoughts if that's okay, board members. So we've presented to you a lot of information this evening. I think that, first of all, thank you Jonathan, to you and your team for doing, I think, incredible work. When we talk about having this data, not just at the district level, but school by school, it will help give our schools the data that they need to improve the outcomes that we have collectively prioritized within our strategic plan. And by being able to have some public facing reports, and we are thinking that those would be published quarterly by school and by district, and shared with each of our school accountability committees as theoretically required by law, in a way so they can watch and thinking about locally, how do they concentrate their efforts in real time on these issues to continue to focus on improvement? When we talk about closing achievement gaps, opportunity gaps and disproportionality, it's going to take a Herculean effort. I don't want to, I don't want to say that to you any other way. And the way that you do that is you get everybody focused on the same information, focusing on strategies that some may be similar, but some may be nuanced depending upon a school. And as all of our schools begin to focus on that improvement, you will begin to start to see that improvement at the district that's been so elusive for Boulder Valley Schools in these areas. And so, we're excited about this work. I think that, you know, as we think about metrics, you know, what we're asking you to do is consider these and then approve those for us in May as a first iteration. And then over time, as we see how these help our improvement efforts, help our transparency, help our accountability to our public community and to the ones that we serve, that we can create a process to continue to evolve these over time as we think about what our priorities are together as a team. So, just wanted to share that information and then happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Richard?
Thanks Jonathan. I think you did a tremendous job in terms of the numbers and showing us the disproportionality and disparities. And there's a lot of information there as it relates to numbers in terms of this, of number of children, blah, 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 blah. I guess my question would be, are we going to get any information at some point as to the why? So for example, the bilinguism seal, we know that there's X number of students getting the bilinguism seal out of X number of students. What's stopping the other students from not getting the, what are the obstacles in terms of that? What are the obstacles as it relates to children in AP classes and children in IB classes and that, you know, what are those? That to me is a major interest.
So I think that the first step is creating clarity around expectations and the information, right? Setting baselines on where this information is. And what should be referring to, I would think of as an annual report back to the board on how we've progressed in our goals, what's worked, what hasn't worked, what is the work that we need to do. I would say locally at schools as they develop their improvement plans, those are the types of questions that they should be thinking about locally. And then I think about as a district, when you roll those numbers up, that we'll have to do some deep dives. But I think that you would do that and answer those questions in an annual report. I would say that the way to systematically go about doing this is set the expectations, get everybody on the same page, folks know what the focus is of what we're trying to do. They understand that these are the areas that we are trying to focus on as a system, right? To create clarity, to create strategies as we think about our strategic plan. Some of our strategies are going to be implemented district wide, others are going to be nuanced depending upon the school. So what you'd be asking for, Richard, I would think would have to come in a year from now to give folks, schools, an opportunity to understand, focus, and then let's start to continue to dig into those barriers.
Thanks Rob. Can I ask one more question before you shut me down here? I guess I'm referring to structural barriers, you know? What are the structural barriers that doesn't really hit the school, but it's up here at our district level? What are the barriers that are preventing our kids from getting into AP classes? That's what I'm looking at.
I totally understand, right? And so, again, I think that as we think about, and I can work with you all on this around, what is the information you want to see after we've set this as a focus over a year? If it's what are the barriers, what's happening? You know, to specifically answer your question, you know, Richard, I think that we've got our partnership with equal opportunity schools that's really looking at some of those barriers. And what is it that's causing kids to not be prepared or not feel comfortable to be enrolling in those courses? And I think that we're working on that and we'll see some progress. But again, I think that, you know, for our schools, for our communities, we're creating really clear measures of progress that are very transparent and consistent. And it's something that I think is another piece to the puzzle on these problems that we're trying to solve. It's not everything, right? But when you create clarity with these measures and give that to the folks that are working on it so they can know and understand how things are going, right? Then we can dig into the root cause of what's happening, why things are working, what's not working. What are the promising practices that we want to scale from schools? What are the things that we know are the systemic barriers?
Okay. Donna, and then I'll ask a question.
I have an easy question. It's just slide number 18. I just want to clarify something on that slide, if you go back to that one. I'm assuming that SRD, Significant Reading Disability, you're not referring to that under the special ed label of Significant Learning Disability. Is that correct?
Right. This is based on reading only and basically scores on tests, so you can absolutely have a student who is identified as having a significant reading deficiency, who is also qualified for special education, and you can have students who aren't.
Okay. That clarifies this. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that and anybody that might tune into this might know the difference because a lot of people are assuming that an SRD would probably be in that SLD group, but I guess it depends on just how significant that disability is and how it impacts their grade level. Thank you.
And I had a comment and just a thought. I still struggle a little bit with the metric around learning opportunities. I feel that's more of a tactic to an outcome, that we would offer learning opportunities or add specialists or decrease class size to get to one of those objectives. So it made me think of two things. One is thinking about some of the language that's in the proposed legislation for the audit of the accountability system. And they look at things, they're suggesting some items like the number of successful interventions. So we get to that a little bit with the number of kids with an intervention, but one of the questions might be how many kids graduate out of ESL or ELL programming per year? And how do we, you know, increase that rate? Or how many kids get off of an IEP that's something that we would think they should be able to progress out of? For me, that would be something that you might use extra learning time, or how many kids in FRL are able to get into an advanced class. So that's just another way of thinking about it, that I think I still struggle with just adding learning time and not having a measurable objective to that. That's all I have. Not a huge deal, just a thought. But I do like this idea in the audit bill of measuring the effectiveness of your interventions.
Absolutely. And the metric that you're speaking to Tina came out of the process that we worked with with our stakeholder group. Am I correct on that Jonathan? And that was something that they prioritize collectively? That's not to say that we can't grow or, I certainly would want to honor the work and the process that we use to get there. That's not to say that we can't consider something in the future that gets to, almost like a program type of evaluation metric, right? Is what you're kind of referring to Tina? Like the idea of what's the effectiveness of kids who have been, who have had the right amount or the required or recommended dosage of whatever that might be, and how many of those kids are actually, you know, what's it doing? But I think that there's some room for growth there. And again, these are going to have to be dynamic, we're going to have to have a review process. But what these do for our schools and for our communities is first, and I will share that I shared this with our principals about a month ago, I think. And, you know, we have to have active school advisory, school accountability councils, right? For this, for the local data to have a place for discussion and thoughtful engagement around how the schools can improve. And so, again, we've set the expectation that all schools have active school accountability councils as we move forward, to have the right place to have this engagement and discussion as required by law and as required by just good practice on how you really get communities together to improve schools.
Other questions or comments? Great. And this is going to be on study, right?
Well, I guess I would ask for a recommendation from the board. We can put it right to action if you would like, or we could, typically we try to, you know, give a study and action. If you all feel like this is ready to go, we can put it right on action on May 11th. If not, it would go May 11th, May 27th, study and action. If we felt like that we wanted to provide space for the community, provide input, or if you all wanted to have any other conversations and thoughts around that. With the understanding that if we make significant changes, we'll have to go back to the drawing board with some of the dashboards and it will be, take us a little bit more time to get this to go live.
I think that you also mentioned that this is going to be an evolutionary document in any case, so I don't have a problem taking it to action because I think we're going to see this evolve as we find out what is most effective and seeing where we're going. So that doesn't bother me. It's not like a piece of policy, so.
I agree Tina, and I just want to say thanks to Jonathan and all of you for this hard work and putting this together because, as you all know, I've been big about opportunity gaps and kind of in response to what you're saying Tina, I'm probably a little more lenient on looking at what we're doing that gets to outcomes, and that's why we'll be evolving this, because we have to look at both. So, thanks.
I have enjoyed and will always appreciate our rich dialogue about whether or not to have learning time. And I'll just say that we have very respectful but very passionate conversations about this topic.
I will say we would be looking forward to the opportunity to presenting this to the State Board of Education. Board members, if you remember the local school accountability grant that we applied for, that was really one of the incentives as we try to drive this conversation around the state and even across the country on what is it that schools should be looking at and the public should be looking at in regards to performance. I think that a lot of what we are presenting today was also in the House bill around school discipline, prison, school to prison pipeline, that, you know, they were seeking some of the transparency that we're providing, and I'm excited about that. I think that you can't, you can't solve problems and work on problems if you're not honest of what the problem is. And I think this is really a great first step. So we're looking forward to the opportunity to try to get in front of the State Board to share our work. And then also, as other districts, because I do think that we're a leader amongst other districts in Colorado on some, of being transparent on some of these measures, you know, we hope to be able to lend this work and some of our thought processes to our colleagues as we all try to dig into these big problems that are not just problems here in Boulder Valley, problems all across the state.
All right. Well, with that, I think we could take a break for 10 minutes and get ready for our next meeting. Is that okay with everyone? Okay?